Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes, did you say we're ready to get started?
Yes.
Okay. I heard.
You hear better now?
Yes.
Maybe that I wasn't talking very loud.
You gotta be.
Oh, that's right.
All right, good morning, everyone. Today is the second day of our budget retreat. It's Friday, February 2nd, 2024. I am calling this meeting to order and giving notice that the city council at any time may vote to go into executive session, which is not open to the public, for discussion with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Asland.
President.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
House.
Here.
Matthews. Councilmember McCarthy.
I'm here.
Number Sweet.
Here.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McCarthy, I don't know whether you saw this in the chat, but I've asked you whether you would lead us in the pledge.
The answer is yes. Please stand.
Thank you.
For the reasons. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation and the God indivisible, every king and every judge after all.
Thank you. Getting back to the agenda. And Councilmember House, will you read our mission statement?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Harris, our land acknowledgement?
Yes, my pleasure. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you.
All right, staff, let's go.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Good morning, everybody. I'm gonna launch right into this in a second. I will reintroduce Jeff Kennedy to come in and lead us today. I want to wish everybody Happy Friday, nice snow around. The news out of Punxsutawney is that the furry beast did not see its shadow. It means short winter, early spring, get your gardens ready. All right. Want to, before we start again, give thanks to Public Works for hosting. I want to thank the budget team for putting this together, especially Heidi Derryberry, who did a lot of pulling together of the agenda, working with all the divisions. We had a good retreat yesterday. Today, we are anticipating an abbreviated schedule. So we'll get into it with hopes of maybe adjourning early. Are you ready, Jeff?
Yep.
All right, let's hear it for Jeff.
Good morning, Happy Friday. Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Asland, City Council, and staff. Thank you for being here, as always. Yo, I don't have anything like, any clever exercise or anything for you today. I did have a story I was gonna tell, but I started thinking about it. Like, we're scheduled till 1:00, and lunch is scheduled at 12:30. I'm thinking if we just get started and pace ourselves right, we might be done around lunchtime. Is that okay with everyone?
Okay.
Oh, that, that, oh, okay, all right. So, listen, let me just kick us off real quick. There's this quote that says that champions keep playing until they get it right. It's from Billie Jean King. And you are all champions in this room, and I love working with you guys. And listen, most of us can't handle the burdens of our own home. You've taken on the burdens of an entire community, and you do it well. So thank you for that. Let's get started. Resource allocation and priorities this morning. I talked to the guys already, you're up. You said that you, we've got you planned for 90 minutes. Let's, the clock is ticking. All right, let's go, let's give it up for them. All right, we've got Sam, Evan, and CJ. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Mayor, Council, know you're online up there. A pie for everybody online.
Very funny.
All right, well, we're gonna jump into operating capital. This is one that I kind of hold near and dear to the heart. We're gonna talk about replacements and maintenance. So for me, I serve as our current section director for facilities and streets. And we're gonna talk a little bit today about facilities, and then we'll roll into the fleet side of it. I can't make it appear as well. Just a quick overview. Who are we as a team here? So, facilities as a team of 13 and a half technicians. Our goal is to support and maintain all of our facilities here, City of Flagstaff. We've got over 100 facilities, just over a million square feet of real estate. That also includes the MRF that we adopted this last year. It's a large building, also requiring a lot of, a lot of maintenance to get that one up and running. Over the last two years, we've seen a ton of growth and a ton of opportunity in facilities. We've seen a team come together far beyond my hopes and dreams. Nearly led from, kind of leadership from that gentleman right there, Mr. Joe Ronigan. Joe is our facility superintendent. Thank him for everything he does. A lot of the movement we have going here is also our transition into supporting our customers. We are internal service providers, facilities. However, we support those, support the external service providers. So, if City Hall isn't up and running, and it's kind of that trickle-down effect, so our goal is to make sure we're supporting keeping everything up and moving. One of those tickets that we're doing along the way as an asset management system, part of that's also capturing all the data from our facilities. So what is that? It's understanding what you have, when it needs to be replaced, what kind of condition it's in, and what is the maintenance life on it? And that's what we're really trying to enhance, is ensure that we have a system in place, keep track of those 100 facilities, and try and get on a better pace for understanding when our operational capital needs are gonna come up. Right now, it's kind of that hurry up and wait for something to break. We want to be more proactive. We want to get to that point where we say, hey, we know we have to start budgeting for, you know, an AC unit at the library, or siding at the Aquaplex, things like that, as we know these projects come up. We're also gonna have, we're finishing up the asset or the facility condition assessments citywide. What that has been is a third-party vendor has come in. We're walking through every facility. It's something we've been working with the management team to ensure that, or the leadership team, to ensure that we can get through the facilities, not disrupt anybody's work, but go in and truly get a condition assessment of all the facilities where they're at today. And that's gonna give us a fresh data point when we get our system up and running. It's gonna help us in our budgetary's standpoints and our operational maintenance. One of the big pieces that kicked off about two and a half years ago for facilities is we started the Facilities Advisory Committee. And the purpose of that committee is to bring all of the building maintenance and managers of those buildings, all the leadership tied to those buildings together, and start talking about what are the needs? What are the large maintenance needs? And how do we start to consolidate our financial asks? Before this, everybody was kind of working independently, working in the right direction, trying to keep their facilities in good shape, and everybody was kind of doing these independent asks, working through numerous different processes to try and get funded for projects. Now, with this team, we're able to bring all the projects in, review them. We're able to rank and prioritize them based on the need, the facility type, the usage, and then what funding we have available. So FAC has been one of those things that's continued to evolve and grow, really trying to understand where it goes in the future. It's a little young in its, in its life here, but even early on here, just working through all of the items that we have, we're actively working on $10.5 million worth of deferred capital. Now, that doesn't mean we're working on everything. That's only the piece we're working on. Our early estimates are about $20 to $30 million additional of deferred maintenance capital. So, our goal is to get ahead of that. That's what we've been working on. Right now, that team works with $230,000 annually. Not a big number. So, our goal is to try and figure out how do we move that needle? $230,000 doesn't get us very far when we're looking at projects like I just mentioned with the Aquaplex. Years. Yeah, so annually, it's tough. And we're trying to figure that out. Last year, the budget team was extremely generous and was able to find some additional one-time funds, and we got a ton of projects done, and we're gonna review those projects here shortly. But we can't rely on that one time every year. So we've got a group that, probably 20, 25 people in that group every month, and we work through these projects. But frustration comes when we try and figure out, how do we do all that we have with that? That's what we're trying to get ahead of, is try and figure out how do we increase that ongoing money? And even if there's one time tied to that, great. But how can we get ahead of a bunch of this deferred maintenance? Our goal is to get to $1 million annually. Now, if we did that, and we had nothing else break, starting today, we still have $10 million worth of deferred. So we've got a little bit of a road ahead of us. The team's been very positive, very collaborative, and we've made a ton of progress in this last year, even with some of the limitations. These are some of the big ones we want to talk about here. These are kind of the big wins for the facilities team. Taking over the materials recovery center over there, the Norton Recycling Centers. Some of you probably know, are familiar with that. The completion of community development and engineering, that place looks great down there. That's my opinion. I thought they knocked it out of the park. Really good for rejuvenation project. Sustainability got their offices remodeled, health repurposed, and set up a more functional workspace for their teams. City Hall boilers, we appreciate everybody's patience as we work through that one. The next one for us is, and it's already come through council, we appreciate that, but the City Hall roof, that one's in progress, and the library boilers as well. So, this here was a ton of work. And that facilities team, in addition to the 100 calls for service they get a week, a day sometimes, we're still able to get all these big projects done. So while sometimes we say, oh yeah, there's all these hurdles, they're moving mountains right now, and it's been amazing to watch. But we still have mountains to go, so I hope we're not quite there yet. Our ask as we come into this is, what do we do if we got additional funding? That's been the big ask is, do you have a plan if you get additional funding? Here's the list we have. We have the full rebuild and ADA access on the north side of City Hall. Been a project deferred for about five to six years because funding isn't available. The Aquaplex siding, some of us look at it and go, that was just built 20 years ago. So, as we look at it, there are certain areas of that where the siding has completely failed. And now we're trying to figure out how do we get ahead of it? We initially budgeted for that project, I think about a half a million dollars. It's quadrupled since then. So it's on our deferred list. City Hall libraries, and City Hall and library windows, window replacements. These are energy-efficient things. These are also part of that building envelope, making sure they stay sealed, helps the deterioration of the facility in the long. They lively, hard scape and ADA access. What's hard scape? Everything outside the facility. Sometimes we forget, right? The responsibility doesn't stop at the doorstep. It stops at our property line. So when we start looking at things of driveways failing, sidewalks around the facilities, gutters on the buildings, drainage systems around our facilities. So, it's more than just that internal. So, if additional funding is available, we would be ready to go. And it's one of those, we've been working with the budget team, the leadership team, and they've been really, really supportive of it. But there's a lot of work ahead of us. For the hurdle, we've got a solid team with FAC, and that's really the big piece of this here is to acknowledge work that FAC has done, Facilities Advisory Team, and the work they continue to do. So. With that, if there's any questions on it, happy to answer.
It seems to me that we need new windows in City Hall and library.
I'm gonna hand it over to Joe a little bit here on that as well. This was the one that was brought forward prior to me. Up until recently, they hadn't really had any maintenance whatsoever, so the plan was to replace them. You're gonna have a higher energy value, just in general, for a much more sustainable atmosphere within City Hall. And then we will mitigate some of the leaks. And we have, I think, on 90% of the windows in City Hall and the library, we have water penetration. We have mitigated that recently as a Band-Aid by resealing the windows in. But that only touches the surface, so you're not getting to the underneath, the underlayment, the overlap, watershed correctly to make sure you can actually eliminate that water leak. I've looked at two of them myself that actually got deconstructed, and they're, the membrane underneath there is absolutely worn away and in need of replacement. I mean, it is, it is a bit of a struggle though, because you have brick there on quite a few of the windows. So, wrestled, I've gone back and forth with a few engineers on the right way to do it, but it's definitely needed. You're gonna see about two years of resisting the water, based on what we did this year, but then you're gonna be back to water penetrating through. And at the time, water penetrates all the way through, you're gonna start breaking down your infrastructure, framing, anything within the ventilation, your framing, metal's gonna start rusting, and then you're gonna, we're gonna be rebuilding City Hall at that point if it gets too dilapidated. And we're, we're, we're not far from that right now, in my head. We, we've let it go quite a few years. So, it's definitely one of our high priorities. Funding for it and finding the right product at this elevation has been our hurdles.
Follow-up comment.
Sure.
Seems whenever I ask a question to staff, have a good answer. So, thank you.
Sir. It's a great question, because it is an odd one when you look at the big list. What does that mean? We've got these experts.
You guys are coming around telling me that my windows in my house need replaced. Primary reason is they need the money. My windows are just fine.
Yep. Yeah, we are, we are not a profit organization here in facilities, so ours is just to try and make sure that we can reduce our maintenance.
Appreciate the answer.
Question online, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council and staff. Good morning, Sam and Jeff. I do hope to be in person there a little bit later. Maybe Stacy can let us know what's for lunch, and that'll motivate me. My question is, no, I will be there. About the, about the windows, we recently invested something along the lines of $4 million for capital weatherization projects. There's a bit of a chat going on online, but I wanted this to be on the record. Could we talk a little bit about where those expenses are coming from? If it's coming from that weatherization investment we made? Or how the, how that money's being shuffled around?
Vice Mayor, I think you're referring to the Naresco contract?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, perfect. So this actually wasn't within that scope. It is an energy project, but it was already on our books. It was partially funded. It was something we were aware of, but it wasn't initially on that scope. Is it part of the big scope and the overall mission of that? Yes, it is, but it wasn't on that, that first case. If that helps. And for us, it's, we're budgeting the money, and Naresco is basically our project manager delivering that money. So at this point, the funding just wasn't there. Three questions.
We have a comment from Nicole, and I'm wondering if she can jump in and give some elaboration on that. And Nicole, could you please talk about the lighting project in City Hall, and then how this dovetails with the window seal project that's been going on at City Hall, which now I understand is not part of the Naresco project?
Yeah, hi, good morning, everyone. Happy Friday. Absolutely, so to backtrack just for a moment, the windows were not included in the initial scope, and as Sam alluded to, there are a few reasons for that, as that it was already in the work plan for facilities moving forward, and there were funds allocated to it. In addition, when we did the overall, what is called an industrial-grade audit of city facilities for the energy conservation contract, we had to make the numbers pencil out in a manner that allowed us to move forward with a project that had a financial bottom line that worked well for the city. And as the council may recall, we actually funded all of these projects up rather than taking a loan out to initiate them. With that in mind, the lighting phase of the project was really the first big step in the energy conservation contract. We're considering that kind of step one, and is nearly complete. We have some touch-up work to do back at City Hall. It turns out, unfortunately, that the electrical system at City Hall is nuanced. I think that might be a fair way to describe it. Hopefully, Joe is nodding his head. But we do, we did uncover some, some challenges with the electrical systems in City Hall, which are causing some challenges with the new sensors that were put in. And so we're working on addressing that in a manner that works best for everyone. We will be moving into phase two of the, the project this spring. So we're a little bit on hiatus during the winter months and working towards wrapping that up. Exactly, we are. But the updates are being, oh no. Those updates are provided in our monthly city report as well. That goes into a lot more detail on that work. I'm not sure if you heard that we are essentially, because of the winter season, paused in our work on the ESCO. And then we, we do have a few things to clean up, as I mentioned, to finalize with the lighting upgrade. But that was our step one.
Yeah, thank you so much, Nicole. I think we did get most of that, and it was just toward the end when you started to break out. So thanks for jumping in. I'd like to add to the conversation quickly. You know, on the library windows, we talked about this a year ago, and I think we talked about it the year preceding. So it's been an ongoing project, but it is more of what you have heard. Councilmember McCarthy, the seals on those windows have been long breached, and the, the ability of them to function from an energy efficiency standpoint is assets. Plus, there's now the aesthetic of the, the windows fogging up because of the condensation that's occurring between the glass panes. So I know that's been a priority, and I'm glad we continue to give a discussion. Thanks.
Yeah, all these projects, they stay on the list. So if we find those one-time funds, these are prioritized projects, and then we get done based on the prioritization from the advisory committee. So that way, we have buy-in from all the divisions, all the groups, understand what projects get delivered next. Great questions.
Good answers, thank you. If the windows hurt leaking water, especially, that answers the question.
Yeah, that's where we're currently at with those. It's no different than the siding on the Aquaplex. Now we're starting to see that penetration of weather and, and how we've got bigger issues on our hands, but very large capital renewal projects.
Just tell a quick story. My brother had a, a place up north in Seattle, had some issues with the siding, and they thought they would just do some minor repairs. Pulled off the siding, and all two-by-sixes or whatever they were of the frame were literally powder. They just turned into powder and falling down. And that's what happens when you have leaks that get, water gets inside the wall. So they actually ended up tearing down the whole thing and building a new structure from scratch. We don't want to have to do that.
No, and our goal is to try and stay ahead of as much of that as possible. And, but again, we work within our, our, our means at this point, and we continue to push and, and find those, those avenues to progress and enhance our maintenance practices. Anything online? All right. I'll hand it over, I think Fleet's up next. I'll hand it over to Evan.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Evan Chirrell, I'm a Public Works Section Director overseeing and supporting both Fleet Services and Solid Waste. So they'll be talking about Fleet Services largely as it pertains to the general fund, with the focus of, of, of budgeting, of course. So, what does Fleet Services do? They do quite a bit. They do all the repair and maintenance pretty much in every machine, vehicle, et cetera, throughout the entire city, which is approaching 750 units and increasing. They manage a parts warehouse and inventory in our shop as well, which comprises about $400,000 of active assets within that, that warehouse itself. We just looked this morning, we manage the fuel distribution center here at Public Works. Last year, we went through 350,000 gallons of fuel, gas, diesel, and diesel exhaust fluid at that one distribution center across the city. We also manage vendor relationships, we coordinate with them, warranties, recalls. We do also do the vehicle registrations and licensing for new replacement vehicles, and of course, changing and maintaining the asset list within the city organization across all divisions and rolling stock in heavy equipments. And then, of course, we also manage the city pool vehicle program, which we're also actually trying to grow and, and enhance that, that vehicle list. So assets, as I mentioned, we're approaching about 750 units of rolling stock, which includes anything from tagged equipment, so generators, to a refuse compactor at the landfill, to a fire truck and a police vehicle. It's, it's very unique, there's a lot of variety in those, and so Fleet has to be very specialized in its ability to do repairs and maintenance and diagnostics across a wide variety of equipment and machines. We do outsource on occasion, and we outsource, of course, when we have more workload coming in that we can manage. Fleet staff is currently with the management team, a total of 16 full-time employees allocated within the city itself. So of those assets, the current value on original purchase price is about $60 million. And of course, as everyone known, has known inflation, and, and the cost of things have, have risen quite substantially. So that replacement value is, is clearly substantially larger than that $60 million mark. If I had to make a guess, we're probably 100, 100 million or, or above. It's a very broad, broad brush value there. And then we also look at replacements as different criteria, as the age, mileage, the cost for repairs and maintenance that we've performed on, on these vehicles or machines, and of course, the, the odometer or the hour meter, how much have we actually used these machines? And when is a good replacement value to optimize our sale of, of a existing unit for a, an asset and gain back, and then to replace it, so it minimizes our overall maintenance and repair cost? Similarly to facilities, Fleet also has a Fleet Management Committee, and it's largely to oversee and support the oversight of vehicle equipment replacements. We look at a variety of criteria and similarly identify priority rankings based on the vehicle type, its use, and of course, the mileage, cost of, of, of the maintenance ongoing, and the age of that vehicle. So, the committee is led by currently the Fleet Manager, and they review and approve priority scoring across all Fleet replacements. And this includes general fund, but also enterprise fund, different categories as well. So, also, in the past, and are currently ongoing, reviewing our existing policies and have adopted the EV-first policies, and looking at our utilization criteria, and also our underutilization criteria. So, this committee that comprises users across the entire city, every division, and essentially, department section or division that has a vehicle, heavy equipment machinery, is, is part of this committee. And, and we have different section heads or managers or supervisors that sit on that committee and equally represent across the city as an organization. And then, of course, we provide recommendation to the budget team and to council with respect to general fund replacements, new vehicle additions, and of course, as I mentioned, also enterprise-funded. new vehicle additions, and of course, as I mentioned, also enterprise funded accounts as well. Fleet replacement funding, and this is again, very specific to general fund. So for the past several consecutive years, there's been an ongoing fund for fleet replacements across the city's general fund of $765,000. This fiscal year, there was an additional one time allocation of 400,000, bringing us to a total of 1.165 million in general fund fleet replacements. So the table in the upper right hand corner, I'm going to walk before the camera, apologize, reflects what that replacement funding has been from ongoing since 1999 to present. And as you'll see, from 99 to 2009, that base allocation was 600 to 650,000 dollars. There was a dip during the post recession and then from 2014 to present, we're at about 750 to 765 where we're at now. So the, the basis of that is to show that from 1999 to 2009 to our current base allocation is we're only about $100,000 above that original allocation. And we know that things have dramatically increased in costs, inflation parts, there's still a lot of supply chain issues out there related to COVID. So just wanted to kind of bring that to the, the group's attention, council and, and budget team, of course. We also, of course, in Fleet have the special revenue and enterprise funds. Those are various. The solid waste fund is, is, is one of those major users.
When you're ready, we have a question online. Sorry to interrupt your flow there.
Yeah, I can, I can pause now.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes, thank you. Let's go back to the statement you made about EV first, that that's a policy. Can you explain that?
Sure, yeah. And, and others could maybe jump in if I don't get all the information, but in a, in a very high level discussion. So council has adopted a carbon neutrality plan with aggressive goals and a vision to offset the city's carbon emissions. You know, in, in certain respects up to 2030 and beyond. So the EV first policy is, is a policy that in collaboration with sustainability, Fleet and the entire fleet management committee live with essentially a document where we are prioritizing that all new and, and replacement fleet vehicles from a light duty up to an SUV is a, and EV is, is the first approach to what we are going to be looking to purchase first. If those are not available, the second option, we look at a, a hybrid, hybrid plugin or a hybrid our vehicle. And of course, if those aren't available or if they don't meet the city's needs or each, each unique division or sections needs, then we go with a internal combustion engine or a conventional vehicle unit. So this EV first policy was adopted by the fleet management committee. And any new and replacement requests that come to the fleet management committee's consideration, there's also a EV exception form that is compiled and reviewed as part of the committee in the event that the end user is proposing a non EV replacement or new addition vehicle. You know, this does not include medium or heavy duty vehicles yet. Those technologies are still very emerging and, and are of course, very expensive at the same time. So hopefully that answered your question, but I'm happy to have anyone else jump in. I think Jenny and Nicole are also online if they have anything to add.
Now, I have some follow up comments and questions. Is that okay? Can I do that now? Whoever is in charge?
Absolutely. I don't know that anybody's in charge and mayor feel free to jump in. But I see your hand and I'm glad to do what I can to make sure we facilitate here. So please continue.
Okay. All right. So, so here goes my question. So we remember a couple of months ago, maybe longer, that we had an issue with police vehicles. We needed them. Okay. Correct? Everybody remembers that? And we couldn't get EVs. So we had to go with the combustion engines or whatever, regular cars. My concern is how long does it take for that process to happen? And I, I guess what I, where I'm going is that by the time you go through all the committees, you know, if, if, and I'm using the chief as an example, so don't get bent out of shape, Chief Musselman, if you're there. But you, you, you told us that you needed these vehicles. It was an emergency. We had police officers doubled up. Our response time was down. How long did it take to get that approval to get those other cars? That's my concern and my question. If we're in an emergency situation, how long is it going to take for us to get through the committees, to get approval, to get the things that we need to keep our city operating?
Yeah, thank you for that. And we have Chief Musselman to help clarify.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wish I had a good answer. I don't know because that was run through the fleet management committee as far as how long it took. So Nate's in the back.
I have to give a, a high level response.
Level works. Thank you, Evan.
We've had to be creative in how we are acquiring new and replaced vehicles. And you know, the fleet management committee meets once a month typically, as business is needed. And we do have supplemental reviews and approvals through FMC fleet manager committee and when needed to, to move those forward. Currently, we're also working on a focus group that's being led by Shannon Anderson to evaluate our flow and process from inception of we need a vehicle to when we can actually, actually purchase and acquire it and bring it to council for formal approval. So that, that timeframe, of course, is variable with respect to each vehicle and machine, or you know, is it available? Are there EVs available? To my understanding, the PD purchase was intended to be hybrids and then they were no longer available. And we went through, again, a creative process to garner approval through the city manager's office and fleet management committee that happened to my understanding quite rapidly to acquire those and meet the needs of, of PD. So I'll pause there. And if Nate wants to add something to that, or if there's other questions that we've not answered.
Yeah, it's Chief Musselman again. So the, the purchase and getting the vehicles was pretty smooth. Biggest challenge is we still have those vehicles and none of them have been able to be deployed as patrol vehicles because we received them. And then we started, once we received them, we started calling the vendors to outfit them. Went to put lights in them, the radios, the MDCs, the striping, the prisoner cage in the back. And DPS beat us to those vendors with 300 vehicles. So now they're six months out for getting those built. So we have the cars. Getting the cars wasn't the problem. Now we have a new problem. And we didn't look into getting them built because we didn't have them. Now that we have them, and we do have the cars. We're just struggling with getting them built. And the cost of building them has increased astronomical supply chain.
Okay. So, so mayor, council, city manager, my concern is the, I'm sorry. My concern is the process to get the exception to the EV. That's my concern. I, I know that demand is high and everybody's trying to get, but if it takes us two months to get an exception when we know we need it, then that just puts us further behind. And I'm using that as an example because I have no clue how long it takes you to get the exception. Is it immediate? So does the chief go to the committee? I know we don't go through sustainability. We go to a committee and we tell the committee that this is an emergency. We've tried to get these vehicles. We can't get them, blah, 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 blah. Does that committee have the authority to make an immediate decision or do they have to wait? And if so, how long?
I can answer that pretty directly.
Go for it.
Good morning, Nathan Ilaborsky, Fleet Manager. So to answer your follow up question very, very directly, the EV exception form is not presented for approval by the committee. That is between the fleet manager, the department, sustainability. We have a sign up on there for a budget team representative to make sure we have financial capacity on such a decision. And an approval like that generally takes one phone call. It's generally approved within 24 hours. Some non emergency decisions may have some back and forth discussions on what's available, what the department's specific needs are. Specifically, the PD Tahos, that decision was made with one phone call in less than a decade.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure Jenny has an opportunity. She jumped in earlier. And then as we're having this discussion, if somebody on our side, on the staff side, could please inform us as to what the market is seeing with respect to EVs, is inventory improving? I think that's going to be an important talking point. But good morning, Jenny.
Good morning, folks. Jenny Niemann, Climate Action Section Director. I didn't see Nate standing there, so he's got it. We tried to make that decision as quick as possible. We've got Danae, our climate analyst, pretty much in very frequent contact with Nate and Evan and their team. So try to be as responsive as possible. And I think as you heard, you know, we've got a lot of challenges in the industry, right? It's not just the city. It's, it's pretty much across the industry. It's not just procurement. It goes to outfit a vehicle. So in terms of electric vehicles, you know, demand continues to be high. And again, I think that some of our process challenges continue to not be fast enough for the dealers. But frankly, that's, that's all vehicles for the most part. Nate can feel free to correct me, but we've just got challenges across the industry.
Okay. So just as my last comment and follow up to this, and I really do want this on the record. And it'll be part of the minutes is that my concern is that while we're going through these challenges with EV vehicles and we know we have them all over the country, everybody's trying to get them. I don't want our city to stop getting the things that we need because we can't get EV vehicles. The priority is always the community, safety, all of those kinds of things. EV is definitely a priority for us because we've adopted this carbon neutrality plan and we want to work as hard as we can to meet those goals. But we also don't want to lose sight of what's important for the city. So it's not an all or nothing thing in my mind. And I just want to keep putting that out there so that we don't lose sight of that, that we can't be so focused on meeting our carbon neutrality goals to the point of everything else. So just so we hear that. And then I'll just leave that rabbit hole alone.
Well heard and well stated. Thank you so much, council member.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the questions and I'll, I'll continue on. But I will say that, you know, we have continued to collaborate with our partners in sustainability, with procurements, with legal, to make sure that we are acquiring vehicles. And, and, and I'm constantly looking at how can we best streamline and optimize the process to make it the most efficient process possible. So, but of course, without cutting corners, we have to make sure we are following procurement's requirements and other rules and regulations, internal and external to the city, to make sure that we are meeting all of our, our needs for all the divisions and departments, of course, but procuring these vehicles and acquiring them in the most appropriate and necessary way that we, that we need to as a, as a municipality.
Sorry to be chatty here, but I think a relevant question too, on the backend of things here as we talk about EVs and converting our fleet. How are we doing with maintenance and repair? Is that, I assume right now, if that is needed, we're going out of house. But in the future, is the vision, Evan, that we will have trained staff to be able to perform updates and, and repairs on EVs?
Absolutely. Yes. And so even for this upcoming budget cycle, we have put money in there for specialized tools and equipment for working on EVs. Currently with them being so new, the maintenance has been very light and, and restricted for, for the time being. And then we're also looking at adding some supplemental training to make sure that all of our staff have the most current knowledge and understanding of how these operate and, and also from a mechanical standpoint, from a, from a safety standpoint, from when they're actually doing repairs and maintenance on these high voltage batteries as well. Thank you. Moving forward back on kind of the, the budgeting components of, of fleet and, and with respect to, to general fund. We also have a catastrophic fund that is housed in fleets for unforeseen repairs, failures, accidents that happen that may result in, in a, in a total vehicle. And, and that is money that is, is maintained in the fleet's fund as a catastrophic fund. Currently we have about $414,000 in that particular fund and it has, of course, specialized use, but it's, it's meant kind of as a contingency fund for if and when something were to happen and we need to quickly replace a vehicle and have funding for it. So that's kind of the intent there. And of course, as most probably know, is a, a new fire truck, for example, fire apparatus, which we'll talk about a little bit, can cost upwards of over a million dollars. So would that have enough monies set aside for a catastrophic failure such as a, a fire truck failing? So that's questions and things to kind of perhaps consider. The other item that we'll talk about even in the next subsequent slides is the electrification fund. So Fleet was allocated a electrification fund that was carried forward from, from previous years, but this year was $200,000. And that's monies that have been developed to offset the additional cost of acquiring EVs. Mr. Clifton mentioned earlier, what is the market looking like with EVs, cost, supply, et cetera? It continues to be extremely volatile and it has been. And we've seen some recent decreases in prices, but we don't know what those trends are looking like moving forward. We've also seen the supply be very unknown. We've had EVs on order that have had to have been canceled contracts because the vendor could not fulfill the order. Currently, we have five Chevy Silverado EVs on order. They're supposed to be actually getting built in March that we've actually issued a PO for. And we're hoping to see those as soon as March and, and April of, of this year. So, so that was a one time allocation this year that was carried forward from, from the previous year of $200,000. And that has come in, been very beneficial to our acquisition of EVs, namely this fiscal year. So fleet successes, we, we did, you just heard from Nate. He is the city's newest fleet manager. He's been with the city for, I, I can't remember, but it's been more than 10 years and he's worked his way up through 15. Thank you, Nate. As a mechanic to lead worker, the supervisor, now the fleet manager has done an amazing job and continues to push fleet forward into new and improved ventures. So those are things we'll also discuss as the budgeting season continues as well. We've also really, as, as we talked about collaborating with, with vendors and other dealerships, Fleet has developed and retained a lot of, a lot of positive relationships that have allowed us to acquire vehicles. Well, as council member mentioned, also, the process from finding a vehicle to purchasing can take some time. And there have been dealerships that have started to limit their willingness to hold vehicles for the city. And, but we've, we've maintained good relationships and we've been able to actually get them to hold on vehicles. So we can get through our procurement process, bring them to council, actually acquire them, again, in the most timely fashion as, as possible. But tho- those relationships have really helped us to benefit in replacements and additions in the past several years, of course, including this year. Of that general fund, we've looked recently, we've currently fiscal year to date have spent about $900,000 on the general fund allocation of that 1.1 million that's been allocated. So we have five months less in, in the fiscal year to purchase more vehicles. So that's definitely been monies well used. And then this third bullet here is that we have spent $176,000 of that electrification fund this year to help to offset the cost of, of EVs. And currently we have 10 EVs that have been either ordered, received, or that are on order that have, have been used from that electrification funding this, this fiscal year. So we have currently 10 EVs, total cost of about $765,000. Again, still, still quite expensive. The recent lightnings we've acquired were a little bit less expensive, but those were kind of year end items that they were trying to get through their, their end of year inventories that could have perhaps reduced the cost on those. But the other EVs, of course, have and have continued to be rather expensive from a procurement standpoint. And as I mentioned, we've used that EV fund to offset the cost of $176,000 this year.
Councilmember Matthews has a question. Thanks, Evan.
Thank you. Great. And so just, this kind of just dovetails on council member Harris's question. But when you say we have five Chevy Silverados on order, I know that the, the length of time to get electric vehicles, in a lot of cases, is a lot longer than a hybrid. in a lot of cases is a lot longer than a hybrid or a regular combustible engine vehicle. So when you say on order, how long are we waiting for those vehicles? Versus how long we'd have to wait if we were just getting regular gas vehicles?
Thank you for the question. I believe these five EVs were brought to council in mid October. It may have been November. I don't recall the exact dates. So as I mentioned before, supply chains have continued to be limited with respect to a lot of things. But EVs, of course, being a very highly impacted supply chain. So when we ordered these, we knew that the build date was going to happen in fiscal year 2024 or calendar year where we're at now, 2024. So so yes, to answer, I guess, in a in a broad sense, to answer your question. You know, we we one knew that these were going to have to be manufactured beyond the approval date. They weren't actually built when we ordered them. This also is attributable to the relationships that we've built with vendors throughout the state with our procurements and our state contracts, of course. The lightnings that we did purchase and receive, those were actually approved subsequent to the Silverados. But now we actually have those in our possession and we're actually getting those registered currently. So I guess the answer is it depends. And I I probably don't have a better answer for that, unfortunately. But we have seen significant lead times with EVs over the past two years, essentially. And and we're doing our best to make sure that doesn't inhibit the end user needs and the services we provide as a municipality. So hopefully answered your question. I apologize. I don't have a more specific answer and I can.
So if I understand you right, you're anticipating that long lead time and so you're coming in with the request months in advance of what you would normally do so that it is not impacted by the, we're not impacted by the extra wait time in getting the vehicles. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be one way. Yes, I would agree with with that, although we could use these vehicles now, of course. You know, and and with the lead time, this purchase, this this approval through council was meant to ultimately secure these units. So when they are built, that the city has those on order and they're and they're they're not sold to other or other end users beyond the city.
And what are these vehicles, the Chevys? What are they? In what fleet are they being used? In police or just streets or?
Thank you. So this was a collaborative purchase. So these Silverado EVs have a range of 300 to 400 miles between charging. And these are being split across multiple divisions and sections. So facilities, to my recollection, is getting two of these. Solid waste is getting one, streets is getting one, and then the fifth one, I believe, is Park Flag, if that's accurate. Nate shaking her head, yes. So it's kind of been a collaborative purchase that we did with multiple departments. Instead of bringing each vehicle separately to council, we combined them and brought them to council as a combined purchase.
Thank you. I I appreciate that. I think that the sentiment is that we don't want to see our service level decline because we're waiting an extra year for a vehicle that we need today. So that's that's my concern and I think others might agree with that. So it sounds like you have a handle on it.
Thank you, council member. This conversation is sparking a lot of response. We have our mayor with a comment followed by councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, city manager. I just want to echo the kudos that are being given to staff for your working together and creating a strategy to be able to electrify where we can and 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 to just the planning that goes into replacing the fleet and recognizing that our community has asked this city and the city has committed to this carbon neutrality plan and and I also heard the chief say, and and I think it's important to reiterate. I heard the chief say that we don't allow this to slow down the acquisition of public safety vehicle purchases. So thank you to staff for creating a policy that keeps that moving quickly. So well done all.
Thank you. You, councilmember.
Thank you. There's been some comments about how EVs cost more than a regular internal combustion engine. I am interested in the life cycle cost, which should be to fuel it, gas or electricity, and the maintenance cost and how long it lasts, et cetera. Probably are very competitive in the long run. It's kind of analogous to, you know, you could pay $400 or $500 extra to upgrade the insulation in your house. But you, every month for the next 30 years, you're going to be saving a lot of money on on utility bills because of that added insulation. So it's basically long-term goals versus short-term goals. You have any comments to that?
I do. And we've done some preliminary research and based on available data, and it's from industry leading experts from Kelley Blue Book to I forget the other names, but we've looked at that a traditional vehicle versus an EV being driven 10,000 to 15,000 miles per year is saving the equivalency of about $5,000 in fuel savings on an annual basis. So therefore, if you extrapolate and say you've got 10 years of lifetime of that vehicle, you're saving five grand a year, you're saving 50,000 over the lifetime of the vehicle. However, there still are things that time will tell is that EVs are still very emerging and they're still a new technology. We don't have long-term data to understand the true repair and maintenance cost of these particular vehicles and and even end of life with what happens to these giant batteries. What are the associated costs with that? Those are still a lot of unknowns. But but yes, the existing data do indicate that there is, over the lifetime of of the vehicle, a a rather significant cost savings when comparing when comparing to the original purchase price of the vehicle.
Thank you for your comment. One more from councilmember Harris, I believe, and then our vice mayor.
Okay, I I can't let this kind of go, but with all due respect to my fellow council members, our mayor, our city manager, and all of our staff members, I need for you to understand that I am totally in support of our carbon neutrality plan, totally. So I don't need for anybody to tell me how important this is because I know that. But what I want you to understand is that it's important, true. But we cannot lose sight of how our city operates, the importance of making sure that we have the equipment and the things that we need. We're going to get to carbon neutrality at some point. But I need for everyone to understand that I'm not going to stop asking questions about our processes, even though these things are important. So I don't need a lecture and I'm gonna just be real direct. I don't need a lecture on how important this is because I know that. I need for us to understand that there are lots of things that we have to think about, and this is one of them. So with that, I'm gonna leave it alone.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you. Please. And vice mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I just really appreciate the mayor's comments some moment ago, kind of helping to frame this conversation as settled policy. Our EV first policy was established way back in 2018 and a number of councils now have shown robust support for this. And I know this council is fully committed as well. I just wanted to add to the record the comment that, you know, when when we make a decision to prioritize the electrification of our fleet within the parameters of what is reasonable and what is prudence in terms of speed and safety, obviously. And that is a process that has been developed over the past six years that I think is a well-oiled machine at this point. We don't have to worry too much about it. We are making a value statement as a council. And that value statement is reflecting what we're hearing in the community and what they want here in Flagstaff. In fact, there are lots of, excuse me, there are lots of community members which who are asking us to go much further than than what we are already doing. And I think that that request might be beyond what is prudent and reasonable and safe in some cases. But that's a, that's another debate to have. The point is that our community has over the years, very demonstrably showed strong support for this EV first policy. And I for one am proud to have been a part of three or four councils now that has voted with our with our values to support this transition. And, you know, I think the point is that we're we're supporting this transition in the face of some of the challenges that it represents. This is a value statement and and it's something we're prioritizing because we're willing to put in the extra elbow grease and the extra investment that it requires. We have chosen to be early adopters of this important technology and this important shift in the way that we deal with our fleet. And while we work out the kinks, and I I think it's incredibly valuable for us to ask questions on an ongoing basis on on how it's working and how effective it is and making sure that safety is taken care of. You know, we're also at the same time experiencing the benefits of being early adopters of a nice technology. We're well positioned to take advantage of of this system when it becomes more widespread. So those costs will be lower because we're doing this now or or those costs will average out. We could always talk about all the savings in fuel, parts and service. And also tax credits coming down the line. I don't know if anyone wants to speak about those. And so I I just wanted to add my voice to what the mayor has said, and I think councilmember McCarthy hinted at it. And the the voice of of several councils in a row now that has really made the subtle policy over the years. Thank you.
So these are all great comments and and very important discussions that have been ongoing through Public Works, through our partners with Sustainability, as I mentioned, procurement and this entire process. And I I will say that fleets and and how it works as a whole, we are essential service providers. We understand the importance of maintaining an effective and efficient level of service. And I would say that fleet has done an amazing job at identifying priorities as they come through their door, which are constantly changing. So we're, of course, number one, we're prioritizing public safety. And secondly, is is of course our essential services, no removal, solid waste collection, et cetera. So those are things we are always top of mind and and we're not sacrificing service with regards to prioritizing EVs, just to say it directly. So we're making sure that we're we're taking care of of everyone across the city with respect to our fleet services.
Evan, I think Nicole raised her hand and I posted in the chat a picture of Amy Hagan's really cool EV ride for everybody to enjoy. But Nicole, please.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, city manager and mayor and council. As the vice mayor alluded to, the IRA has introduced a tax credit that will be available for the first time to government agencies or tax exempt agencies. We do have an internal team monitoring the tax credits that will vary. They'll range from $7,500 to $40,000 depending on the type of vehicle. There we still are eagerly awaiting information from the IRA on what exactly that looks at, that looks like, rather, and what that process is. We do know that the tax credits will be available starting in 2000, from vehicles that were purchased in 2023. So we will, once we have more information, we'll gladly either put a CCR together, a city council report, or provide a brief update during a work session for the council. We have some, obviously, internal conversations that need to be had and how that money is is redirected or directed. But we will absolutely keep the council informed on that exciting update. Thank you.
I'm gonna try to get through my last slide here. Good luck. There's one left. So recommendations and we're we're still dialing in on 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 numbers here, right? So a couple items here that I'll just try to save, keep again, keep it at a high level, but we've been looking at all of the funds across the city, general fund, enterprise funds, et cetera. And have identified that base budgets are not in alignments with the true costs of repairs and maintenance, fleet mechanical labor and parts. So we're recommending that all divisions and sections take a a good look at their costs over the past two to three plus years and identify are there needs to make adjustments in those base budgets. We also have the opinion that the base budget funding for general fund replacements should be increased on an ongoing basis. What that number looks like, we don't exactly know at at this time. Additional $400,000 this year has certainly supported the acquisition of of several replacements across the entire city as an organization. And that's going to be an important item looking forward. And and, you know, we also have seen, I guess, throughout COVID and and the post-recession, there have been a significant number of deferred replacements across the city that are now going to cost a little bit more money as as part of inflationary aspects as well. So increasing that base funding will continue to be important moving forward across the city. Third bullet, so this kind of speaks to those very expensive upfront capital investments and and not to pick on fire department, but I guess I kind of have to. So fire apparatus, a new fire truck can cost upwards of, you know, over a million dollars. And when we are allocating general funds in the amount of $765,000, that could eat up that entire funding for one fiscal year. So so how could we be creative to set aside additional monies on the side for these larger capital purchases that would be independent of the general fund replacements perhaps? What would that look like? And how could we set aside the funds to make sure we also are meeting police if they need a new SWAT vehicle or solid waste, everything has has, everything's gone up in price. That's that's, of course, enterprise funds. But for for fire apparatus, of course, those those are big, big ticket items that there are very expensive upfront capital costs. And and of course, we've talked a lot about EVs today. Currently, we're we're proposing a ongoing for the electrification fund of $250,000 per year moving forward. We'll see if we can afford that in the base budget allocations, but to help to offset those added costs and to continue to support the policies and goals initiatives of the carbon neutrality plan. We do feel that additional ongoing electrification funding is necessary, will be needed to continue this trend of acquiring EVs throughout the the city as as an organization. Catastrophic fund, I forgot to mention, we should also look at perhaps increasing that amount that's in that fund for catastrophic replacements or unforeseen needs across there. And then finally, we've been looking a lot at technologies and the city as as a whole, we are, we are using rather antiquated system for our fleet management tracking software. It's currently being housed in Navoline that to my understanding, the city is kind of divesting in currently in other software. So we'd like to firmly look at a new capacity to to manage and oversee our fleet's management from a information technology standpoint, but also that ties into telematics. So tracking vehicle speed, but also mileage and where it's going, its its usage, is it idling more than it should be when it's operating? All those different variables help us understand our true costs of managing and operating a fleet. And then from a fleet management software perspective, it is helping fleet to be more efficient and understanding when preventive maintenance needs to be done, when a major repair needs to be done. Tracking something that comes in, there's there's a bad fluid sample that comes back and reminding them to look at this when it comes in at the next 5,000 mile interval, whatever that may may be. But would help to track things financially in our accounting systems and help our departments and divisions and sections understand more readily of data available to understand their true costs of operating their fleets within their division, but also across the city as well. So that's all I have today. I appreciate all the comments and questions and I'm happy to answer anything further to the best of my ability.
Evan, I want to thank you. Oh, is there a question? Evan, I want to thank you. Oh, is there a question?
Scott.
And that's exactly what I was going to do, Scott. I'm going to echo Scott. Great work. And you did bring about a lot of dialogue on this very important topic. I want to thank our those online who did jump in with some very important questions. And I think all of this made for a very collaborative discussion and very good viewpoints expressed across the spectrum. So thanks for bringing forward this topic, Evan. Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate your time.
Morning, everyone. Paul Santana, Service Director of the IT Division, joined with, joined by CJ. So he's, he's back up here. I promise I don't have any EV fix. So I'm going to go ahead and get started with basically a little bit of history about our infrastructure funding. So in FY23, our division was allocated $500,000 in one-time funding to begin to address the compounding issue of aging IT infrastructure. So for F4, FY24, last year, we were, once again, allocated an additional $500,000. However, last year we elected to defer that funding simply because we, we just didn't have the staffing to be able to efficiently spend and achieve the projects that we would need to dedicate to, to spend that funding. So the good news is our entire operations team last year, they've been very busy making good use of the dedicated infrastructure funding. And here we have listed some of the larger items and accomplishments that we've been able to complete actually over the last two fiscal years. So the majority, or excuse me, almost the majority of our network switches. About a third of our wireless access points were out of compliance for security. So we were able to replace all those Wi-Fi access points throughout the city. Some not so, not so fancy server management capacity things in the background and some virtual machines and data backup improvements. So this fiscal year, we're requesting that the $500,000 that were deferred last year be allocated once again to the IT Department, IT Division, so that we can make our final push to replace our aging infrastructure. Fortunately, this past fall, we were able to secure, we were a bit creative in our funding, we were able to secure an additional FTE on a temporary basis to assist our operations team. So we've been able to really kind of start to dive into some of those additional projects and we have that person through the end of this year as well. So we're going to be able to make the best use of those funds. We plan to utilize this funding to continue investing in both software and physical technologies that will further improve our data backup capacity, increase our overall data security and enable enhanced vehicle connectivity for our public, public safety personnel. This funding will allow us to complete our transition from being a purely reactive environment where we're dealing with 13-year-old devices, we're just kind of waiting to see what's going to break next to an environment with greater stability and reliability. Where we can be more strategic and proactive in planning for our future infrastructure needs. So we also want to recognize that our physical IT infrastructure is really only part of the equation. As these complex data storage and network systems, they simply cannot function without their associated software components. Our water systems won't function efficiently without the software to monitor and manage them. Our traffic networks rely heavily on the software components to function. Enterprise, a large collection of multiple software modules, very critical system, essential for managing and tracking our revenue, our spending. So what we have listed here, basically, some of our most critical software systems. And as you can see, all of these were implemented more than 10, some more than 20 years ago. So we're, we're seeking additional funding this year to more proficiently address these aging software issues. This is directly in line with our IT strategic plan, discussions that we're having with our IT steering committee, which we finalized our strategic plan last fall. If anyone is interested and hasn't seen that yet, it's on our website, of course. So our plan for upcoming fiscal years to continue this funding ask allow us to better evaluate our software and improve the security and operational efficiency of our enterprise applications. And that's all I had today. So any questions? Happy to answer. CJ is here as well. Promise, no, no need to be questioned.
Great job. All right. Got through that. Pretty quick. Just before, before we move on, before we take a break, anyone have any, any other burning questions? I know you've been asked that already. We had great dialogues from the fleet department and a great give and take. So we need to keep it going. All right. Are you guys, are you guys ready for a break? So we're about 30 minutes ahead. Let's take, take a quick 15-minute break, get a stretch, get the restroom, and then let's get back on it. Very good, very good. I think we have about everybody back in the room. Pretty much. Okay. All right. Welcome back. Let's move on. We've got Greg is up and Heidi Hansen in the back. Rebecca, Rick and Scott for this section. And I think we're, we're going to try to move lunch up a little bit early, but we'll kind of see how that works, right? All right. Very good. All right. Let's, Greg is up first. Skip him again.
Thank you. Sorry about that. No, all good. And Heidi, you want to come up in, Heidi Hansen, we can do a little tech team on this if I can put you on the spot. Again, good morning, everybody. Want to circle back on the topic that we broached a year ago. And a very relevant and timely topic, that being public facility security. This is a nice follow-up to the previous discussion by our facilities team, the FAC. And thank you for that discussion. Drilling down on security, and I, I don't want to belabor everything we talked about a year ago, but just quick refresher, we had some discussion, and Police Chief, thanks for joining us. We had some discussion a year ago about a, a rising incidence of disturbances or disruptions, I, I might be a better characterization, in some of our city facilities. Not necessarily of an emergent nature, but things that were nevertheless creating some angst with our employees and, and frankly, with other visitors and, and user users of our facilities, especially at the library, main library, but not limited to the library. We were having some issues at City Hall that, that took some intervention. And overall, I think that the takeaway was overall an increased need to up our game on security. Now, of course, during COVID, on issue, right? I mean, for some time, our facilities were, were closed. And, and then when we did reopen them with our reentry plan, thank you, Shannon Anderson and, and others for that. It was very incremental. But here we are now, and then for the last couple of years, going, you know, pretty much full tilt with the facilities. And even with some remote working, the bottom line is that we're, we're back, we're back to normal operations. And with that, you know, comes the discussion of the security needs. So a year ago, we asked of council and we were so grateful for the positive response. We asked of council the budget item to fund three, am I getting that right, Chief? Three new police aides, civilian police aides to assist us in City Hall, Main, Main Library, and on some rotational basis, Jay Lively and Aquaplex. And that has been put into motion, of course, and is now, we, we can look back a little bit in the rearview mirror and with the benefit of hindsight, we can talk about that and share with you. And, and this might be a good segue to you, Chief, if you would like, and you, Heidi, with respect to the library. I think we've seen some success resulting from having more of a presence of not officers, but police aides in our facilities. I, I've got a slide up here talking about good progress over the past year with positive results. But Heidi and Chief, do you want to provide any narrative to that from what you have seen and experienced?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Heidi Hansen, Economic and Italian Director. Linda Tilson, our Library Director and our Deputy Library Directors for City Services, Richard Tutwiler, would like to say, you know, thank you for agreeing last year to the police aides and, and all of that. What we did though, we thought that we could actually share that police aide for the main library and City Hall, but it's not seeming to work out as well. There's just so many more incidents at the main library. So we're looking to get more full-time security out there. Our incidents went, I believe, I know Linda's on the line, but I believe they went from like 32 last year to 68. And 12 of them are what we call extreme, where we had to get police involved to actually take someone out of the library. And then about 19 of those or more were actually medium. And that means that our library staff, which our librarians, remember, had to go and kind of move somebody out of the library. It's just a really awkward situation and really not what they signed up for, quite honestly. So we're just hoping that we can look at making sure that when someone comes to the main library, that they're having a, a good experience, including the people that actually work there. So we're, we've been in discussion with City Manager Clifton and with Chief Musselman and a bunch of others to look at what that security will look like for the coming fiscal.
Thanks. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. So yes, the police aid program has been pretty successful from in our eyes. And not only do you get someone there that looks like they're in a position of semi-authority, they're a lot more reliable than what we were seeing with the private security. And my, my opinion, they're better trained. And then they have an instant contact to officers via their portable radio. So if something goes south, you're not having to call dispatch, call 911. They can just get on the radio and say, hey, I need help. And when it's a coworker calling for help, we tend to get there rather quickly and helps diffuse the situation at, at the library and at City Hall. Originally, like Heidi and Greg said, our, our plan was to put one full-time at City Hall and then one to bounce back and forth, two to bounce back and forth between the two libraries, the main library and the east side library. And we're just starting to see more incidents at our main library. So we're going to try and reallocate our people to spend a lot more time at the main library. Hope that that will fill the need. And then a budget request this year, maybe to have a fourth to start doing that roving, check in at the Aquaplex, check in at Josie Montalvo, check in at the Adult Center and those other city facilities that tend to draw some people that might have some mental illness or some other issues to help them out. With that, I think we'll take any questions.
To summarize, and, and please raise your hand or jump in at any time with questions or comments. Success with what we put into place a year ago with three positions, now requesting a fourth position. Primarily, this would give us more of a continuous presence at the main library where the biggest need lies, I believe. And then more opportunity for rotation in the other facilities. I want to at least invite or give the opportunity to either Linda with the library or Rebecca with Aquaplex and Jay Lively to speak to this. But Linda, I know that the the library has been a central focus here. And if you have any additional comments to what has already been stated, please feel free to jump in.
She's trying to get on. I think she just came in. Rebecca's on if she wants to go first.
I am here and happy to jump in. Thank you, Greg, for the opportunity. So while we haven't seen the level of incidents at the Aquaplex and our other recreation centers that the library has been experiencing, we do tend to go in cycles where we have usually in the warmer months, we have more activity, which is great, at our recreation centers. And sometimes not so positive though. And our police friends have always been very quick to respond and that seems to be working well. I do think more support is needed. And if provided at the libraries, that might free up some time for others to come around and check on the recreation centers a little bit more than they've been able to so far. So we're doing okay, but certainly something that we need to continue to keep an eye on and ensure that we are managing it proactively. Thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Rebecca. I don't know if Linda is able to, I know she's trying to get online, but Linda, if you're with us, please feel free to jump in and then Vice Mayor will get to your question or comment.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, and we can see you and good morning to you.
Good morning to you too. Yeah, I, I guess I, I was thinking this discussion would start a little later, so I might have missed the introductory part of it. So I don't know what's already been shared, but the, the library has been tracking our incidents that we've had, our security incidents. And they did actually double in the last fiscal year. We're just starting to get some of the fiscal year 24 figures compiled. And they definitely have improved having the police aides on hand. That, that really has helped. But what we're seeing is they really continue and tend to escalate when we don't have that coverage. It's, it's definitely having that presence makes a big difference, is what those statistics have, have shown us.
Thank you, Linda.
Yeah, go ahead.
You did not miss a beat, frankly. I, I know we got ahead of schedule and so you didn't hear us framing the discussion, but it's almost like you did hear the discussion because we were talking about the library, the increase in occurrences. And we are heading toward, we are at a recommendation for a fourth police aide, which would enable the library to have more of a presence during operating hours. And I'm sure that's something that you would like to see.
That is something that I think would be greatly appreciated by library staff who has been handling the incidents, but also by the public because, you know, it, it is distressing to people who come in to use the library when all of a sudden there's an escalated situation right next to them. They're shouting or yelling or someone's breaking the glass case for the archives or, or unfortunately, some of the people just coming in and, and passing out and, and us not being able to wait them and all. Those, those things are I think also distressing to other people who are coming in and using the library.
Yeah, I could only imagine. Thank you, Linda. And if you could kind of sit tight because I, I'm hoping that there will be some discussion. The Vice Mayor has a comment and we want to hear from you directly, Linda, because you are experiencing this firsthand. By the way, I reside across the street upstairs, but with the window overseeing the library in Wheeler Park and the activity that you're speaking to, I can say anecdotally, yeah, there's been an increase. There's been an increase in emergency response. Incidences occurring outside the library. So totally understand what you're saying. Vice Mayor, can we hear from you?
Yeah, I have a question. I think this is mostly for Rebecca. She made me think of it. And I apologize if there's any assumptions in here. But that's what the question is for, for you to help dispel them or to clarify. Can you guys talk about the role that the new park ranger position is playing in this conversation? And if there's any crossover or if that's just a completely separate thing?
Thank you so much for the question and for remembering that we have an exciting new position and pros called the Park Ranger. And so we were able to onboard Matt, our Park Ranger, just a few weeks ago. So he's been in training, but I will say that position is really focused on our parks. So education. So education on our park rules and during events, making sure that event partners have the resources and support that they need from us, as well as following, ensuring that they're following our rules as well. Certainly, as needed, he could come through, but his role is really education and support. And not necessarily, you know, if it's an incident that requires removing someone from a facility or things like that, that's going to still have to be the police department. Does that answer your question, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand, have a better context for, you know, how all these new positions are playing into, factoring into things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Time for other comments or questions by anybody online or in the room? Yes, Councilmember McCarthy.
Support adding a police aide. Can I be brief?
Brevity is the wit of soul. Thank you very much. Councilmember Sweet?
Can I second them?
Soul of wit, I had that backwards.
Brevity.
And the sign of intelligence.
And bad humor.
Okay, hearing a little bit of support, any other comments? We're getting a nod of the heads. So I think that, there's no more slides on this, right? Yeah, I think that concludes the discussion on this. Thank you very much. I know it's a very serious discussion, but a relative one, a relevant one and timely one in terms of our budget discussion. So thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor and City Council, good morning. The next topic on resource allocations is about our one-time items that are funded. Ongoing resources that may be funded with one-time sources in our budgets as we go through each year. Sometimes we don't have the ongoing resources need to fund, really need is the ongoing appropriations. So just to first explain what we're talking about is, you know, generally when divisions do their request to the budget team across all of our funds, they designate whether they expect this or want this to be an ongoing resource or just a one-time resource. A one-time resource, maybe they have a consultant that they want to bring in for one year. They only need it for one year, and it goes away. Ongoing may be those increases to things like software maintenance that we want to fund in an ongoing basis versus just one time. So those are just some slight examples that we have. So as the budget team, you know, is reviewing these and trying to make decisions on what to prepare for the council's budget on an annual process, we got to look at all these requests and balance them against the resources we have. We look through our five-year planning process, our revenue estimates, and build what our capacities are to fund items within all of our funds. Most go to five years, and a lot of them go to ten years or plus when we're trying to do our planning. So the budget team has a hard job to look at all these requests and determine how we're going to fund things. And quite often, we don't have the resources to fund them as an ongoing appropriations and continue those in a budget for multiple years. So the budget team may say, yes, we understand the importance of these requests. We would like you to add these to your program and provide those, but we're only going to provide you the one-year funding this year. It's a difficult decision, but it's something we have to make quite frequently. And this then requires that division to come back the next year and request those funds again, because it's not an automatic. It really depends on resources the next year. Budget team tries to take an approach and try and move those to an ongoing funding source as those resources come available, but it has been very difficult in the long but for good reasons and good purposes over the last couple of years. Some of the things that kind of moved us in this situation, here's just a list of some of the funds that have these types of funding in the current year budget. But some of these things that occur is, you know, back in 2008, when we hit the recession and as revenues increased, they were very slow to increase, but we understand that our operation expenses need to continue and move forward. So that was one of our concerns. Inflationary factors for costs, maybe not keeping up with the revenue sources we have available over time. Those are the kind of things that puts strains on our resources. Adding services or expanding services within our program, which are very important for our community, sometimes take up those resources also. So, but one of the things over the last couple of years, a few years, is we really want to make sure we're investing in our employees. And we make that a priority as we go into each budget session. Investing in wages, compensation, benefits, and those kind of things, staffing and so forth. So we really take that to heart, that we want to look at markets, merits, and fund those in our organization. So that's our top priority. And when we have limited ongoing resources, and you take that off the top, we don't really have the resource to make these ongoing impacts to our organization without additional fees or charges for services, rate increases and so forth. So just for an example, last year, we invested about $6.5 million in employee investments. That's a big number. Trying to keep up with the resource that we have, we're able to do that, which is a positive thing. But that didn't let us move the needle on the one-time, the ongoing one-time expenses. That's how it occurs. The $6.5 million was for the pay-for-performance increases and step plan increases, minimum wage changes that we know we have to address upfront, several market increases that we have had budgeted current year. Health insurance increases last year, we paid for those, and pay pound adjustments as we go forward. So the focus has been there, but we always have in mind that we have these needs as an ongoing consideration for our organization. And just to, you know, we just had a conversation about our facilities, lead IT areas, and their needs to increase their ongoing budgets. That's not even in this consideration. We have set asides for some of those. But those are additional impacts and concerns that we have as a budget team and we need to address on an annual basis. Finding those one-time funds are a lot easier, as you saw Brandy's presentation yesterday. Resources generally become available to our organization by a couple of means. One is by revenue estimates, exceed our projections in a year. So we are able to pull those and use those one-time. Under spending of operating budgets provide for additional ongoing resources, as well as vacancies, which has been a big area for us in our organization. Last year, we had about $3 million in savings related to vacancies. It's great to have the money, but I'd rather the people in our seats. But that's how we kind of build up funds to fund our one-time resources we have. And that number's been rather large. Currently, it's about $10 million in our general fund alone. But here you can see, $4.2 million is something we probably have to address off the top of that 10 million of continuing operating costs that we've already said, yes, these should be ongoing resources. So here you can see kind of a trend from year to year. They have kind of increased between a few of the funds. I'm not going to go into a lot of details on these items. But you can see the general fund increased a little bit last year. It's really stressful. It's one of those things that keeps me up at night as we have these budget discussions and conversations. Probably puts a little twitch in Brandy's ear or eye as we go forward, she gets that little twitch going. But we understand the importance as we go forward as a team and making these decisions. In the general fund, you know, a lot of stuff could be like software contracts, where software costs increase, but we don't have the resources to do it ongoing. The body camera fees and contracts and those increases over time. Sometimes we say, well, we'll give the money one-time. Vehicle maintenance, facility maintenance, the training, those kind of things kind of roll into those types of budgets that we have. So, yeah, we've been, we've been very fortunate to have that annual one-time monies available. And again, this year, we're looking pretty good. But at some point, this is something we need to address and move forward, but it's a matter of priorities as we go forward. The next subject I want to touch base on is this coming budget cycle and the lift the budget team has to do every year. It's a very good lift we do. And personnel, as I said, investments in personnel is one thing. Those funded items are kind of the first things we address. But then there's requests for funding for new positions, reclassifications, and ad pays. This chart here shows what's in the current request that divisions have submitted through HR and to the budget team. We summarized these this week, and here's the impact of what's requested in the current year. I'll have to say, we don't put filters so much on these requests. So this is really just each division giving their opportunity to say, man, if I can get staffing funded, this is what I really need. I need to increase and grow my staff in these areas. So, you know, without the filters, we're getting a kind of a feel for what our organization is really needing as we expand our services, as we continue to grow as an organization and deliver services in our community. So this year, we're looking at about forty FTEs, full-time equivalent staff in the general fund that's been requested, $4.2 million. That's a lot of money to fund. Ad pay requests, those are items that are like hazardous pay, snow stipends, medical, paramedic pay and those kind of things. Seven hundred seventy-four thousand requested to increase in this coming year. Re-class requests, those are related to existing approved budget positions. And it could be related to staffing that currently exists and it's filled, or it could be a vacancy that occurs in our organization. We say we want to do something different when we rehire that individual. So a re-class would say that this individual or this physician's been working at a different level, or we require a different level of service from an employee. We want to promote them to a different range in our organization and compensate them appropriately for those services that they're going to provide and do part of her job functions. In all other funds, we have a minimal, about five FTEs in all other funds that are requested this year, about $350,000. And re-classes, similar to general fund, about $126,000 of those requests. The next, the next slide is showing you kind of the trends that we've had the last three years, personnel requests. And this just shows you that in most areas, especially general fund, the need for staffing to deliver services in our organizations, trying to keep up with what's added, what we're expected to do, continues to be a burden on us in our divisions, and we recognize that. So in fiscal year twenty-three, we were, you know, requesting about nineteen positions, general fund. And you can see that grew to thirty-one last year, and now we're looking at forty in the coming fiscal year. For us as a budget team and City Council to consider for funding, you can see the dollars related to that. They're not small dollars, they're difficult to fund. And when we look at new positions as an organization, we really want those to be funded with ongoing resources. This is not one of those that fall to that other list. We're going to give you one-time monies for an ongoing position. We really don't want to get ourselves in that predicament for our organization. And so the rest of this kind of shows how other funds have been impacted or requested positions over the last three years. Some we've been able to take care of and reduce, and some may have increased over the last couple of years. And so this was just meant to show you, this is kind of the picture with the budget team manages each fiscal year and our divisions and their requests and the process that we go through. So when we're talking about adding different programs or services, we've really got to understand where our current employee needs are and staffing needs are for our organization. So I don't have anything else on that. If there's any questions, and I know Shannon Anderson has a...
There is a question and comment.
Oh, she was, she was sharing, there's a question online. Councilmember Harris.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask Rick about, I remember when I first got on council, there was a conversation about looking at processes and seeing if we could streamline those so that we could get things done quicker. And some of the conversations centered around really not having the staff to really do that. So I'm wondering if these one-time funds could be used for something like that that does not require ongoing support. It's not like a position, you know, it's like we hire somebody, they come in, they do the assessment or whatever, and then, and then we're done, and they're done. Is that a possibility?
Councilmember Harris, yes, we could look to fund some type of consultant or agency to come in and look at cities' processes, how we deliver services and that kind of stuff. It would be a very big task to do it as a citywide function. We could break it up into areas and develop that over time. But I really see this kind of thing we could do, yes.
Yeah, I was thinking more about, I remember there was a lot of conversation around getting people their permits, their, whatever it is, the, so the whole development in, I guess, or the whole building, you know, where you have to go and get a permit to do this or that or the other. And sometimes it takes a while to get those through. I remember hearing that conversation even before I got on council. And so I'm just thinking about those kind of things that we've talked about, but haven't had the opportunity to do them because we haven't had the funds or we haven't had the staff. And so I'm not talking about a whole citywide revamp. I'm just looking at individual, perhaps departments, that would help them to do their jobs better. And maybe they'd find out that if they streamline or if they change their process, it would be better for the whole area. Does that make sense?
Yes, that sounds like internal, you know, service, you know, how do we work people through processes? You know, Dan, if you want to come up and talk to that process, but sure, we could, we could spend money. We can bring in consultants and definitely analyze some of this stuff. But in the end, it's about staff trying to deliver those services in our days, but...
Right, well, that's what I'm talking about, because if it's been, you know, I don't know how often we look at our processes, if we review them every year, every two years, every five years. I'm not sure, because I'm not into those details. But I'm just thinking that if we have one-time funds, and if we can use them in an area that might save us either time and money, that might be helpful, rather, you know, and I'm not saying that positions aren't important, because they are important. But I'm just thinking of, if you do a one-time project, then you don't have that ongoing cost. But maybe you reap a benefit from that process. So, anyway, just a thought.
Hi, good morning. I'm Dan, full Community Development Director. And so, yeah, we do have a number of processes that applicants go through. And so, yeah, we do have a number of processes that applicants go through depending on what their project is. Um, at the front end, commercial, industrial, multifamily, they get through a concept and site plan process. Uh, we rechartered that team a few years ago, it's our inter-division staff team known as IDS. So it's not just folks from community development, but really across the organization. Um, I think we made incredible progress with the efficiency of that process. It was kind of an outcome of a listening tour I did a number of years ago and trying to streamline and get clear what are requirements, what are things that uh would meet goals but aren't necessarily required by code? That was confusing for applicants. Uh, we've trained our staff and we have a lot of new staff involved in the inter-division staff process. We've trained them on, you know, what the goals are, um, how we get folks to approvals. Rather than sending things back with corrections, there's a point where you just approve it with conditions because they're gonna continue through the review process, probably at a building permit level. And so I think we've done a great job, Michelle McNulty, Alexander Puccirelli have led that effort, uh David Millis in development engineering. So I think we've done a really great job on the inter-division staff and finding some efficiencies. Once you're out of that, then you go into a building permit, so it's plan review and uh building permit. That's uh our building official, Amy Tressler. Her team, and we've certainly had challenges. Uh, we have, we've had challenges in planning as well with vacancies, but the last couple of years, Amy has had to rebuild both her plan review team and her inspection team. Uh, we're fully staffed right now and we feel great about all those positions. I feel like our turnaround times on building permits are good. We published our, we publish our review times, we meet our timelines. I just like to say nobody's ever thanked us for having to get a permit. We've done, we do a pretty good job, so, but we are aware of that. And so we are always looking for efficiencies and I appreciate those comments, councilmember. Because the time it takes to get permits obviously is tied to the ultimate cost of the project, especially when costs are continually going up for land, labor and materials. That's my story on that question, but uh we're always looking for efficiencies because we know the more things we have waiting in the queue, the harder it is for us. We want to get things out the door. Uh, we're not there to try to put people through the wringer or whatever because for us, the best thing to do is get the permit out the door and then get the inspections done, so.
Yeah, thank you, Dan, and uh I appreciate that information. Um, and I wasn't specifically picking on your department. All I'm trying to do is figure out ways that we can use those one-time fees that might gain us something in some way, so.
Anything I was gonna mention is that within our building safety and code compliance team, we do feel like we're properly staffed. We have the right people. Um, there is one position we've asked for in comprehensive planning, which I didn't talk about today, but that's a whole other program, Sarah Decker and her team, the regional plan, neighborhood planning. Uh, we've slowly been able to grow that program. Is one of those positions that's on the list up there is for a, a senior planner slash historic preservation planner. Thanks, Dan.
Yeah. Uh, Mayor Council, CJ Perry, your IT director, uh, just to kind of dovetail off of uh what Director Volk was talking about, uh, IT also has been doing a lot of processes uh to kind of help this uh indirectly to what you're talking about, Councilmember Harris. We have one staff member in IT that's dedicated to both community development and engineering, and they've been doing uh what's called a business process mapping uh where we're taking that IDS process that Director Volk just talked about, uh documenting what it looks like, documenting what all the processes are, how long some of these processes take, looking for efficiencies. We focus on it obviously from the technology aspect. Um, the IT mission statement is our purpose is to provide the secure tools to make your job easier tomorrow than it was today. So just kind of in line of what you're talking about, we're trying to make people's jobs easier from that technology aspect. So we're partnering also a lot of divisions on that business process mapping, looking at where those efficiencies can be, whether it's with new software. Some of it's just purely improved processes and and we get out of the way and just and and let uh the divisions improve their processes as well. That's something that we're focused on as well. Um, also within IT, we've seen a lot of success in that consultant model where we've uh hired consultants to help us with our internal processes, with our strategic planning. Um, right now, we're, we're revamping our whole project management, project delivery processes as well. And it's been extremely helpful using some of those one-time funds in order to improve what we do internally. So there's a lot of advantages there, so just some added context. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick, today we've talked about funding needs here and there. And then yesterday we kind of talked about how much money we have. And the way we kind of talked about it is we talked about all these various funds, you know, some going up, some going down. It would be interesting to see a total, all the funds. You might not, you might want to, let's say, an enterprise fund, you might do that separately. Uh, like on the general fund, we might be interesting to see if, what's the sum of, you know, property tax, uh, sales tax, all the other incomes we get. Let's see what the trend is, the total trend. Together, is that something you have or is that you?
I have them individually, I think I at one point put a complete spreadsheet together, but I haven't updated them in years now. So I, it's something we could look at.
I think that would be useful because I mean, the bottom line here is enough money, what surplus or do we have a shortfall or? What can we do? Do we need to increase the property tax, not, you know, those kind of issues. Uh, some of the things like the sales tax, I don't think we're gonna change them. So, and discussion about where there might be opportunity to get more funding, we need more funding. Uh, does that question make sense?
Yeah, no, it's a good question, it's something we can definitely try and build and and bring back in April. Uh, I think one of the challenges will be is the COVID pandemic, how that impacted revenues and change. So you may, we may see a blip on that, you know, coming into it and then out of it. But uh definitely something we can, we can consider. You know, I think some of the areas um we haven't done much work on and it's, it's typical process, it's a lot of work for staff is uh charges for services have not really been reviewed for years, I'm gonna say at least seven years as far as a good review uh within the general fund. So that's one of those areas, property tax, we talked about yesterday is is one that has some capacity uh for us. Um, those are probably the main areas that you can see some movement on the revenue side if if needed.
Right, thank you, Earl.
You.
Well, good morning, and here we are in resource requests and needs. And I'll be honest, this one's a little bit uncharacteristic for this category, but as of late, um, as public works, solid waste group and section, uh, we took this topic and myself, when I say we, I mean me, I took it to division leadership and to budget team, and I've started to solicit a little more input and a little more dialogue as we start to navigate this um recycling services agreement that we have. And I want to just provide a little bit of an update. Uh, it is timely at this retreat as this project is now starting to move a little bit um in a direction that I think is going to be hopefully positive. Uh, but I think it is also kind of a a notice to you all that we want to provide you as much information as possible, be transparent, make certain that we're continuing to discuss this with our community because it really is a frontline core service and I think there's always lots of dialogue. You know, just simply based off of our EV discussion this morning, um, this will be another important community values conversation. And the more information you have, the more comfortable you're going to be with future decisions. So really the status of the recycling program here in the city of Flagstaff has been in flux for quite some time. Um, not all at the fault of any resident or council or community. Just simply recycling services have been off since twenty nineteen. This was when that China sword came in and we all started to talk about what it meant for recyclables. A quick summary would be every community went through the exact same thing. And they had to try to figure out what their community does, provide service and what has become really an expected service to the residents. Um, so once that occurred, if you remember back then, it was solid waste director Hanson at the time. Todd brought us some recommendations through a consultant that looked more at a transfer station model. Um, that plan was being implemented when early last year, the Norton former recycler processing company abruptly ended and ceased operations. And as you all know, we assumed those operations. And we just advanced the new transfer movement and we went to that hub and spoke model where city of Phoenix metro is really where you take all the recyclables. That's where they're processing them and moving them to secondary markets. We became a spoke, we started to move all of our material south. So we obviously implemented those things to the credit of our solid waste team and a lot of efforts across the city and different divisions. Um, very little disruption to our customers, we continued with the service. The last six to eight months has been excellent for us to gather data. We've received tonnages, we've done better jobs at tracking. We've really got a good informed data point and an allowance of data that informs what we're doing. Um, it is proving up that it is still a strained market. It is still difficult to take a community's recyclables and do meaningful things with them for an efficient cost. Um, and that data has been getting better, but it's still not great news in my opinion. And that's just looking through a financial lens. Hence the reason I brought in the budget team and wanted to start talking this through a little bit. You learned yesterday that this is one of those funds that's in the red circle. And we want to try to move that more towards the shade of orange this year. Um, we have contracted our hauling services, they do go to the Phoenix area, whether it's the city of Phoenix North Gateway Facility or at this point our Friedman facility, they're a private contractor. Um, we again send our material to that Valley Metro area. I mentioned we're not alone, I don't want you to feel like we're on this island, it feels like it from time to time, but uh we are learning from our peers, our industry partners, and uh good communication has been occurring. But here's really the piece that's important for you all this week is just last week, we put another request for proposals and solicitation onto uh what we call the street. The community received that and uh we are now transitioning from our second bridge contractor, which is Friedman Contracting. They are on contract till June one. Uh, we are soliciting another request for proposals to try to find even a more efficient operation. It's fairly open-ended, it's fairly um detailed. Uh, but we are extremely hopeful that in the next four weeks, we will see respondents from across this industry come to the community and want to provide this service on our behalf. Um, we will go through an evaluation process and then of course bring this back to you. Our goal will be, it will be towards the later parts of spring. Uh, but we would like to have this settled clearly before June one as um we are gonna have to do some balancing. We're gonna balance, balance our, our value of environmental stewardship, environmental concerns, and of course the expectation of the community. So um wasn't hoping for a lot of dialogue today, more just an announcement, kind of letting you know the RFP is on the street. Uh, we're working this issue diligently. Um, we've continued to staff it and support it with city operations, but uh it is of high community interest. I think you will receive an email or two about this and uh it's an important topic. I think I want to continue to advocate that we answer those questions and we be as transparent as possible. Um, but this one is going to need the support of all. That's hence why we brought in maybe the leadership team for some further eyes, the budget team's focus. And uh this was one of those good community conversations where um we want to try to find a good resolution, but also know that it might be uncomfortable for some of those values as we balance them out. So a little bit of a heads up, but I also wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to take any questions, answer those questions for you and make sure you're getting the support you need in what we see as a pretty significant transition of a core service. With that, um, back to Mr. Clifton or council and mayor, if you have questions.
Questions or comments?
Thank you all, so I believe it's.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And honestly, we kind of want to give everybody a hand because we got through pretty much all of the agenda for the most part up to this point way early. So I, no, nobody gets upset about getting out a little bit early on a Friday, right? Alright, so, you know, lunch is scheduled for right now, but we're gonna kind of blow through that. We'll have lunch at the end. We want to open it up right now for our council forum. Um, so uh Mayor Daggett, uh please, if you want to take the floor, um, city planner, um, Clifton, if you want to take the floor and we'll just, we'll go through this. We don't have to rush through it, uh but we'll take as much time as we need and then we'll go to lunch and that'll be it for the day.
Thank you, Jeff. Mayor, do you? Jump in, mayor, please.
No, I'd like you to um, to handle this discussion so council can give all of their ideas and expectations.
Thank you, mayor. We will shoot for uh an eleven-thirty lunch, so we have about a slightly less than forty minutes to have some free-flowing discussion uh that, you know, will hopefully uh provide council an opportunity to speak to things that either have been discussed already over the past day and a half or items that have not been discussed that you would like to bring uh to the, to the table for discussion now. Um, and we uh have found value in these uh sessions in past retreats. Years ago, council expressed a desire to have a forum that could be a little bit open-ended uh where ideas could be exchanged and uh this is, this is that exactly. Uh, just to maybe uh spark some discussion or or thinking here since yesterday morning, uh and I'm, I'm not looking at the agenda of of this retreat, I'm just going off my own notes, but we've talked about a number of things that are very important. And in no particular order, we've talked about the downtown services and and the downtown business alliance, waste collection, restrooms, lighting, snow removal and so forth. And that uh segued into a very good discussion about, you you know, what is different about downtown versus other neighborhoods and and areas throughout the community, underlying that of course, uh always equity concerns to be considered as we allocate resources uh throughout our community. Uh, an opinion I will offer on that topic is, it's a good issue to have. Uh, we are seeing a lot of activation and um interest in our downtown environment. And uh, you know, we're, we're responding to that as we talk about resource allocation and and expectation for services. That's a good issue. Uh, you know, think of a community with a dormant downtown that is not active, where buildings are partially boarded up and of communities are vying and and doing so desperately to, to seek economic activity. That happens in communities, it it happens a lot. Uh, we're on the other end of the spectrum, we have an active downtown. Uh, and we're having very good, I think, and and uh interesting discussions about how, how to address that and uh moving forward. Uh, we had, have had great discussions about revenue updates. Um, it was interesting for me to hear Rick Tatter, the uh, your summary of things because uh Joanne and Shannon and myself, uh, we were in Sedona just last week hearing from economists talking at the state level about things that are happening. And it was very parallel, as I mentioned, to what we heard you say, which is people are not necessarily anticipating a recession at this point. Uh, but in the state of Arizona, we are indeed anticipating a flattening of revenues, at least at the state level, and that could in turn translate into a flattening of revenues at the local level. The question being, you know, what impact, what ripple effect will occur locally because of declining or flattening revenues at the state level? Stay tuned on that one. Uh, but that does uh provide or set the stage for many of the other discussions that follow, all of which involve to some level a request for either continued or additional funding. Um, yesterday afternoon, uh, I attempted to uh just have a little refresher uh regarding the roles between staff and council uh related to policy formulation and implementation and dovetailing that with community expectations via the process, the petition process in, in the midst of a very engaged community and what that means for all of us. And of course, that was intended very much to uh remind us all uh that we operate with a lot of competing values and interests and programs. Uh, we see emails every day, I read a couple this morning, uh, where things are being requested uh of the city council uh and of the city org. We see emails every day, I read a couple this morning, where things are being requested of the city council and of the city organization as a whole. And it's always helpful to bring that consideration back to what I depicted as a Venn diagram where we show, you know, what is that role? Who does what? And then tying that in turn to our core services and the support services that we put up on the screen. Making the comment, and I will state it again, that as we see our economies ebb and flow over the years, and we all see that, the expectation of our community with respect to core functions and core services does not ebb and flow. It is a constant and something we need to be mindful of always. Then yesterday afternoon, we had a nice overview of, a very high-level overview, intentionally so, of our, of some of our capital projects. And thank you to the team, the many teams involved with that. That really sets the stage for the discussion that will occur at the end of March. Stacy, do we have a date on that next retreat?
March 20...
That's okay. 28th, March 28th, please mark your calendars accordingly. That will be our capital improvements retreat, one day, one day only. And that one has proven to be an important part of our budget process each and every year, especially now because there's so many capital projects. So thank you for that overview this morning. Very nice discussions related to facilities and fleet. A quick commentary there with our FAC and FMC, new teams forming a very important function for the organization as we endeavor, and I think Sam and others hit on this, as we endeavor to systematically address our assets and our needs in, in a comprehensive way that affects the entire organization. There's so much importance to what I just said, and you had a nice snippet of that this morning. Of course, a takeaway being we are grossly underfunded on our needs. We're trying to catch up, we've had a lot of deferred maintenance of our facilities over time, and we're behind the curve in many respects. And then a very nice and engaged discussion on fleet, respect to EVs, thank you, and we took good notes. From that, we have, we had a nice update regarding IT. And then we segued into the discussion about security needs, thank you for that, very important discussion, recycling. And these are just things we've been touching upon. Council, any additional comments? And I'm really hoping that we can have some dialogue here, because again, this is an important part of our retreat agenda where we look to you. If you've been hearing in, in an engaged way, you've been hearing from us over the last day and a half, what have you to say about where we are? It can be project-related, it could be budgetary, it could be, as I mentioned yesterday, just where we are as a community and what lies ahead. Because again, this budget process is more than just dollars and cents. This is talking about where we are in terms of meeting our values and our goals, what lies ahead, are we heading in a good direction? Is that a good summary? Does that maybe spark some interest for some discussion? Because I was worried.
Yeah.
Councilmember Harris. Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, City Manager Clifton. That was a good summary of the last day and a half, or day and three, and one quarter. Yeah, I just want to kind of go through some of the things that you mentioned. And especially, you, you mentioned about expectations. What are our expectations of staff and, I guess, staff expectations of us? So I'll speak about my expectations for staff, and then a few other things. And I will try and keep my remarks to three to five minutes, if that's okay, just like we ask our public to do. My expectation of staff is that they listen with an open mind. Just because we've always done things one way does not mean that that's the right way to do. I'm not making comments about any specific department or person, and people need to hear that with an open mind. What I'm asking people to do is to just be open. You hear me talk a lot about the crazy people out there and not trying to be mean or anything like that, but the people that we sometimes don't listen to because we think that they're out there. Well, sometimes those people that are out there really do have some good ideas. And I happen to be a person that might be out there sometimes. I try and think outside of the box. And so when I'm thinking outside of the box, it's not to tell you that you're doing something wrong. It's to say, can we look at this? Is this a possibility? Has anybody thought about this? And if, and, and if we've tried it and it doesn't work, then so be it, and that's fine. I don't have an issue with that. I just got on council in just about a year ago, two years ago, well, a year ago, whenever it was. And so, yes, I'm absolutely new, but this is not my first go-around. As school board president and member for six years, we made decisions that another council is bound by right now. So I know that. So when councils make decisions, we're going to make decisions on this council, and the council that comes after us is going to be bound by that decision. Sometimes we can make changes and sometimes we can't. So I get that, and I totally understand that. Voices, when I'm talking from the dais or in meetings like this, keep in mind that I'm probably traveling in some circles that maybe a lot of you aren't traveling in. I'm hearing from people that maybe you're not hearing from. So give me the benefit of the doubt that this is just not Deb Harris. Give me the benefit of the doubt that maybe she's in a circle that I am not in or that I have not been in. And so maybe this is coming from the constituents that she might be in contact with. And then the last thing that I want to say is that I'm going, I ask a lot of questions because I'm naturally just a very curious person. And so my questions are not designed to make anyone feel less than, or that they're not professional, or that they do not know their job. My questions are designed to give me more information and to hopefully spark some conversation. And so with that, I think I stay within the three to five minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, council member. And I want to tell you, we do not have a timer going, so you're, you're cool with the three to five minute thing. But a comment to your comments, if you don't mind me jumping in. You know, the beauty of having an elected body of seven individuals, of course, the practicality is we have seven individuals. And if we have a, an issue that where there's a bit of a divergence of viewpoints, you know, we, we always end up with a majority. But, you know, maybe not unanimity, but we get to that majority requirement that we need to take action. So that's good. And it brings about a lot of great conversation. But added to that is the fact that we have seven perspectives at council, and they are always different. So you, as elected officials, bring different perspectives, and some of it may stem from the circles that you are in. Some of it may stem from who you are hearing from, or your own personal ideologies. It is all fair game, but it comes to the dais, and it brings about a very good discussion. And going back to yesterday's refresher, as you embark upon very important policy discussions, don't underestimate the value of, of those perspectives as you are wrestling with policy. They become invaluable in, in that framework. So thank you for your comments, and, and one last comment is, and this goes to, to all of us, you know, council should never worry about being direct or assertive or questioning a lot when topics come forward. You're not going to offend staff, we have pretty thick skins. We understand that at times when you are dealing with intense topics and conversations, there may be an intensity in the room. And that's hard to avoid, and really, it should be expected, and it's all good. We, we seem to have very good decorum in our city council meetings. We have pretty good decorum in our city staff meetings. We all treat each other with respect, even at times when things get a little bit intense. And rest assured, they do get intense at the staff level as well. We get through it, and we get through it because we're all professionals. So thank you for your comments, Councilmember Harris, well-stated as always. Other thoughts and perspectives? New ideas, projects, programs? Councilmember?
Make two unrelated comments. I would say, Greg, in one regard, you have a very easy job. And the reason I say that is you have a great staff. I worked in various organizations, and this staff is way above average. It's sharp people. I've had a couple disagreements with staff people, and you probably know a couple of those, and a couple of them were before you were here. But that's fine. So we have a really good staff, and thank you, staff. My other comment is that we've talked about a lot of details, you know, that's too busy. I think the only thing that's really lacking is kind of a summary of, like, we lending out of money or we're worried about back, or things are great and we can start expanding, or we've got to look for new revenue, or we can... It's sort of a big picture, I don't think we've gotten yet. I think we've gotten the details, but not the big picture. And maybe we can do that in April. Maybe, you know, you and I talk once a month, and maybe you and I can talk about that, you know, some of that stuff. But we can either do that one-on-one, or probably more importantly, do it next time we get together.
Indeed. And I'm going to go back to yesterday morning's discussion with, with Heidi and Brandy as, as we go through color of money and timeline and everything. You know, these budget processes are intended to, to start big and to narrow down. The good metaphor is, you know, we're at the big end of the funnel, but we're going down to that neck of the funnel, and we get much more detailed as the conversation ensues. To answer your question, and I want to tie together comments that I've heard from many speakers, including Rick Tatter and others, about where we are right now, again, big picture. We're good, we're strong. I used, I heard those words yesterday, things are strong, our, our budget remains strong. We're not necessarily fearing a recession, but we are bracing for a flattening of revenues in the next fiscal year. But going back to Rick's chart of yesterday, the trajectory looks good over the horizon, right, Rick? Am I paraphrasing accurately? The, the horizon looks good. Next year may be challenging because of a, of flattening revenues. Now, we can attribute that to a number of things. Inflation's been high. We have, we're still dealing with repercussions from COVID and a huge influx of dollars, especially at the federal level infusion of dollars. One-time expenditures for many, and now we're in the aftermath of that, and no longer are, are there huge surpluses, right? We, we heard that at the, at the conference last week, loud and clear, the surpluses have dwindled. So may, I don't know, maybe we characterize it as, you know, kind of a, a check on the economy, you know, getting things back to, to baseline, if you will, and, and, you know, and then moving forward an upward trajectory. So we don't have a lot of revenues for next year in the general fund, especially for new expenditures. We're, we're pretty constrained. The budget team has a big chunk of work laid out, and between now and when we meet next, we will have with all the divisions, all the requests, and you saw Rick's last chart on the request for 40 new employees. Rick, that was for all funds, correct, or just general fund? Just general fund, yeah, we, budget team has its work cut out for it. There's going to be some, some challenging discussions. But I'll bring it back to the positive. We, we are holding steady, you know, we're not cutting back on things. Our, we haven't talked a lot over the last couple of days about our employees. We, we touched on some things, but our investment in our employees remains very good. As council, and the council preceding it, put into place a merit increase system, which has now transformed into a pay-for-performance system that is budgeted for the next five years. So we, we are good with our employees, not necessarily meeting staff needs and all the things that we were hearing about, but that's a real positive. That's not something that we could have said years ago, we can say it now. We have our pay-for-performance budgeted for the next five years at least. So it's, it's solidified, it's in place. An interesting thing, and I, you know, I try to get my head around this a lot, and it's hard to reconcile. We, we see the need for additional staffing. We are, we are seeing that need across the spectrum, but we can't recruit, we can't fill seats. Things may have gotten better since we talked about this a year ago. We were hitting some, some thresholds two years ago with, you know, emergency dispatch and other functions in the organization, building inspection and so forth. There's just been these, these periods of almost panic, you know, to, to try to get people in seats, the butts in the seats. We think we've made some progress, but by and large, recruitment and retention remains a forefront issue for the City of Flagstaff, and I think for all major employers. So to have that discussion and at the same time talk about additional staffing needs is, is a curious one for all of us. Because even with the funding, it's, it's less uncertain that we can hire and train the employees that we need. Stay tuned on that discussion, much more to, to have on that, but it's, it's quite an interesting situation that we find ourselves in. But things are good, things are positive, things are strong. To answer your question, where are we as a budget? I, I think it's, by and large, it's good news. But again, you know, looking at the next fiscal year, not a lot of discretionary, extra discretionary revenues to, to work with like we have had over the last couple of years. So, Rick, is there anything you want to add to that or clarify or correct? Are you okay with that characterization? Thanks, Rick. Does that help, councilmember?
Sure.
I'm talking a lot because I'm trying to burn through some time, because we've got 18 minutes before lunch.
I'm just wondering if Mr. Aslan knows what's for lunch.
Do not. Well, I did inform the mayor that she missed out on the fresh lox and bagels this morning.
And the crepes.
Yes. Nice, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't, like, I need to share comments, but creating the space for it, and you're sort of inviting perspectives. I, I, I'm not sure anything I have to say is going to feel new. But occasionally, things bear worth repeating, and it's nice to have the space to be able to do that professionally. First of all, I want to, I, I just want to say, you know, I haven't kept track of the number, but like you, Councilmember McCarthy, I think I'm somewhere up between 20 and 30 of these meetings throughout the five years that I've been on council. And not once do I begrudge that. You know, it can feel tedious and monotonous at times. I, I find myself tuning out occasionally, and I apologize for that. But there's nothing like feeling that you're fully aware of something, and then suddenly the conversation goes in a slightly different direction, and you're completely learning something totally new for the first time. Or you're being reminded of something that you thought you knew and maybe conveniently forgot, or with willful, you know, we can be willfully obtuse at times as well, and it's nice to keep all of that in check. When I first came on to council, I think budget meetings went very differently. It's long enough ago now, and, you know, I was still just a baby looking at the mobile and seeing shapes and colors really, and not much else. So it's hard for me to bring context to that experience. But what I've felt over time is that the, the way the process works now is that we all have space to learn and to grow and to be reminded of things, and to just think critically and think opportunistically within a constantly evolving context of, of how to consider all these things. When I first came on to council, and I know that those previous to me had been complaining about about this too, you felt thrown into sort of a hungry, hungry hippo arena. And there was no context for a lot of things and we were simply fighting over the extra dollars that were left over. There were a lot of assumptions going to budget meetings about where money was going to go. And it was overwhelming and incredibly intimidating to be thrust into that process, especially when my background is not spreadsheets and, you know, budget books and pie charts. So I really appreciate the extra time that we all invest in doing this quarterly, I guess, probably. So just, just lending my voice to that. I hope that process continues. I hope long after you're no longer city manager and Mayor Daggett is no longer mayor and Jeff, you're no longer facilitator, Stacy, you're no longer, anyway, I'm not going to but that, that this tradition is strong and that there's a legacy to it. I think it's a great service, especially to incoming council members and to people like me who have attention deficit disorder that we're naturally challenged with. It was, it was mentioned how we all work together and I really do agree with that. I am a firm believer in a multi-perspective approach to governance. I have strong passions and strong positions, but that only makes me weaker in terms of my blind spots. So it really is a fundamental philosophy of mine that we are, we are better when we are diverse. And those perspectives are so important. I, in the past couple of years, I've come to think, I use the analogy a lot of ants carrying a grasshopper into a hole. You know, when you get down to it and you look at it at the micro level, boy, there's a lot of tug and pull in different directions. And there might be complete disagreement at the surface level about where we're going. But when you back up a little bit and you sort of watch the, the process play out, you end up with a fairly solid and healthy vector, right? The grasshopper is going to get in that hole and it's a heavy lift. But somehow, through our amazing American democratic experiment, you know, we've got paved streets, we've got streetlights that work, we've got schools that teach our children, and we have a system that, that serves the public. There are those that are left out of that and I don't mean to marginalize that or make light of that, but in the aggregate, I think we're part of an amazing legacy. And I just really cherish that. It's something I marvel at. You know, we really do cover each other's blind spots. So I appreciate it when I have people at the table that are bringing different perspectives. It's not just about making sure that those blind spots are covered or that my, you know, the things that I don't care about are also being addressed. It helps me to stay accountable and to be able to be nimble and to be able to articulate on an ongoing fashion what I'm for and why I'm for. So being challenged, you know, even this morning, you know, there was a little bit of tension in the room around EB's. That's fine. I welcome that. And it's wonderful to have, you know, we can't take anything for granted in our role here. And it's good to have, to be reminded of that. And we answer to the public and the more that we have to do that on an ongoing basis, the better we're serving the public by being able to articulate what we believe and why we believe it and, and why we think it's, it's the best course of action in whatever context we're in. I just wanted to add a little bit to what I said yesterday. I talked about the principle of, you know, have you given me flowers lately? A corollary to that, which I think is even more important in the context of, you know, constituencies and who we represent. Councilmember Harris invoked that this morning, reminding us that each of us comes to the table with various circles at our back. And that doesn't mean we don't have opportunities to show leadership and push, push back and to enlighten the blind spots that we have behind us. But we do, we do have certain obligations that we need to be mindful of or we're going to be rotating in and out of here on a revolving door, which doesn't necessarily serve the public well either. And the corollary to that is, is the principle of what have you, the, yeah, but what have you done for me lately? And I think we all understand that. That is a shared experience between elected officials and staff and leadership. It doesn't matter how well you hit something out of the ballpark last week. Your public expects you to hit it out of the ballpark again today and tomorrow and the next day. And I think we all get sort of smacked with that reality from time to time and it's, it's, it feels unfair and unfortunate, but it's the reality. We're always going to be asked, yeah, but what have you done for me lately? And so that's just another piece of that to keep in mind. And finally, I'll wrap up with just my general worry about the potentiality that federal funds are going to dry up soon. That is, it's, it's been nice to be in a environment of not scarcity, maybe not abundance, but not scarcity. We've had a certain amount of success acquiring federal funds, making those relationships count, getting those monies in our coffers. And I would like to see a little bit more contingency planning around the possibility that the, the landscape completely flips on its head with the next election, for example. And so those are just some of the top line considerations I have and thoughts that I'm having. I don't have much for you in terms of specifics. I, I'm always impressed with how well we carved the bases. I'm always impressed with how each time we come to the table, I find myself learning something new, even though I might be skeptical of that at the beginning of the first morning. So thank you all for that and I'll shut up now.
Oh, Vice Mayor, those are excellent comments. Thank you, actually. You touched on so many excellent points with eloquence and thanks, much appreciated. I can speak for all of staff and thanking you for that.
And you really should put a three-minute timer on me.
No, no, actually, the beauty of these retreats, you know, no timer and as I mentioned earlier, nobody really in charge. It's a bit more free-flowing and hopefully that's well received. Certainly, our mayor opens the meetings and closes the meetings, but what occurs in between, we have a facilitator to keep us on task and on time, but really within those guardrails or parameters, it's intended to be free-flowing. Councilmember Sweet?
Staff, thank you to staff. I know that this takes a lot of time and effort. I think this budget retreat has gone for me at least the best yet, so I appreciate all of that. And we started off talking about the downtown and I want to also express my gratitude that that was brought up. All my questions were answered and got, and Sam met with, met with me after and we got more information and irons. For me, I'm glad to see that we're talking about the basics of our city and I really would like to keep focusing on that. I too am a little nervous about funds drying up. The derivative side of me coming out. Now's the time to really buckle down and make sure that we have everything, the core services taken care of. So I appreciate the focus on that. And in our future council meetings, you'll probably hear me talk a lot about let's just take care of the basics right now. There's a lot of dreams and wishes that I have for the city, but I think right now we're doing what we need to do to make sure that the streets are taken care of and the trash is taken out and the water is flowing. And I just really appreciate that and appreciate all of the hard work going into the last couple of days.
You, Councilmember Sweet? Much appreciated. Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what several of my colleagues have said and just sharing my appreciation for our staff. I know this takes a lot to put together and a lot of information and to bring us up to speed takes just a lot of hard work and I really appreciate it. I'm a visual person and I ask questions if you haven't, you know, caught on to that yet. But it's just to help me understand so I can be out in the community and answer questions when they come up. And our staff does an amazing job and so I think we're just so blessed. I don't know that every city government maybe has this level of professionalism and dedication to providing us with the information we need to make our decisions and, and moving forward. And I just want to express my gratitude and thank all of you for the work that you put in there to put these on and just every Tuesday when you present to us, I know I can see all the, the work that goes behind it. And Jeff Kennedy, thank you so much for being a great facilitator. I always appreciate you and thank you for your time. So that's all I have to say, but just thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember. Very nice to hear those comments and the thanks, I think there's a lot of accolades here. The thanks go both ways. Staff is so appreciative of the guidance and leadership of our elected body. We work together. There is no separation. We work together. Mayor Daggett, what would you like to share?
Thank you, city manager. First, I want to thank my colleagues for being so engaged always, not just these past two days, but always. Everyone comes prepared and we have great conversations because of that. So thank you. And to staff, I just echo everything that my fellow council members have said up to this point. You all, you obviously know your stuff backwards and forwards and I always feel confident that you're, you're coming to us with having given all of your proposals a great deal of thought and so thank you for that. I know that these, these budget retreats are a lot of work for you all, so thank you. And as we're moving forward with the budget, I too am looking at the basics and making sure that we continue to invest in our foundational services that the public comes to expect from the city, high-performing governance. And so I am supportive of, absolutely supportive of our investments in employees. I think that's number one. We can't do anything without having a top-notch professional team at the helm. And in terms of water, fire, public safety, let's make sure that we are funding those to the level that is needed so that we can continue to do a great job. And want to put another plug in for housing. I believe, you know, we've put a lot of pressure on housing staff and rightly so, right? We've declared a housing emergency. We know whether we're talking to employers or just residents who are trying to make a living and stay here, that housing is often the number one issue. And we're making great strides and I want to see us continue pushing on that. So let's make sure that we're also making the investments in our housing section so that they can accomplish everything that we're asking and expecting of them. And that's it. I look forward to the next time that we get together to talk about these budget items and seeing the magic that you all do when you come forward with some numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for those wonderful comments. Yeah, next time we meet, there will be, again, the retreat at the end of March is all about projects. And you'll get a lot of updates then and we'll make it interesting. There will be maps and pictures and perhaps drone footage. I saw, by the way, a drone footage. You know, sometimes things happen and people catch on and it's like, yeah, that was a good idea, let's do that. So I ducked out yesterday to attend a technical advisory committee meeting with Mountain Line. That was the reason I had to leave the room. And I was appointed their chair this year despite all my efforts to the contrary. And we, so we had a nice meeting and at the end of the meeting, we talked about capital projects and of course, central to that organization is the DCC, that Downtown Connection Service Center. He had, and to see aerials of the construction, because as we drive by it every day on Milton, you know, you kind of look and there's the fence and you see everything, but you're not seeing what's happening. You just see the equipment and piles of dirt. It's fascinating. There's a lot of concrete foundation happening over there now and it's very exciting. Then we saw a drone footage of the pouring of the concrete slabs for the commercial driver's license training facility. How can you make the pouring of concrete interesting? But they did. Somebody did a drone footage and they put good music to it, just like Dave Peterson did a while back, I think it was David, somebody with, with our projects team on the Buella intersection. I loved that drone video and I saw one yesterday pouring the concrete slabs for the CDL project and I found it fascinating. We will try to do maybe more of that because there's a lot happening and the more we can give council, even if it's in a room like this, give you a visual, because you are visual people, of what's happening out there, we'll, we'll do so. So that's coming up at the end of March. But back to your comments, Mayor. Between now and then, and more importantly, between now and the retreat in April, there will be a lot of work because we will have met with all the divisions and we will hammer through this stuff. Again, back to my metaphor of the funnel, we'll be coming with more details and a little bit more into it next time around. So a lot of work will happen between now and then. I want to make sure we give space to the other electeds here. I'm not singling anybody out, but if anybody wants to jump in, Councilmember Harris, we appreciate all of your input today. Any additional comments, please jump in. Same comment to you, Councilmember House. Right now, people are like scrambling, trying to find their mute buttons.
A couple of quick comments. You know, most of our funding is, comes from local and state. We do get a lot of federal funding for special projects, as you know, the Rio de Fuego, Cine. And I think both during the Trump and the Biden years, we've gotten a lot of extra money. And of course, that led to inflation, but it was really handy for the city. I would guess I would like to agree with the other two council members that are sitting with me today in person, that there is some concern that that could dry up. You know, luckily, that isn't all of the funding. It's just some of our special one-time funding oftentimes. But we need to be aware that that could dry up after November.
Absolutely. At least diminish significantly.
Right. I mean, it won't dry up completely. You know, when I think back of my eight years, I'm in my eighth year on council, I think the biggest surprise to me is how much money we brought in from the state sources. And when I served on the board of Mountain Line, the amount of money that they got is just amazing.
Our community has done well with grants and appropriations. We've done quite well.
Yeah. We need to keep trying.
Yes. Other comments? Anything else online? AC, how are we doing for lunch?
Ready to go.
Are you ready to adjourn this meeting? Mayor Daggett, would you do us the honors and close us out? And I want to wish everybody a great Friday afternoon. Enjoy the nice change of weather, enjoy your weekend. Thank you for your hard work and it's done. Thank you.
Yes, everyone have a great weekend and drive carefully and enjoy the snow. And we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sure with my driveway.